Good evening. I'd like to welcome to Albany City Council Meeting on December 11th at 6:00 PM. I now call the meeting to order. Would you all please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Eric, would you please do a roll call, please?
I'm not Eric, but I'll give the roll call.
Oh, I thought he was, okay.
Counselor McGee.
Present.
Counselor Novak.
Here.
Counselor Newton Azor.
Present.
Counselor Kupczynski.
Here.
Counselor Madigue.
Here.
Counselor Smith.
Here.
Mayor Johnson II.
Here. Thank you very much for that. Next on tonight's agenda is a public hearing. And I'll read the script. Next on tonight's agenda is a public hearing regarding policies from the Housing Implementation Plan to support needed housing include construction excise tax, low-income rental housing tax exemption, and city-owned surplus land policy. The applicant is the City of Albany Community Development Department. I call to order a public hearing at 6:01 PM. At this time, I'll call in a staff report, Planner Beth Freeland and Comprehensive Planning Manager Anne Catlin.
Thank you. Good evening, Counsel and Mayor. Thanks for having us. We're here to go over the policies that are up for potential adoption in the public hearing this evening. These are the policies that are were created were prioritized from the Housing Implementation Plan, which was adopted back in June 2023, and we've been exploring these policies until now. And now we feel like we have our final version ready for your consideration. And I'm also joined online by Brendan Buckley, who is a consultant that worked with us on worked with us on this these policies, and he'll be available to help us answer questions if any arise. So there are three separate policies that were that I'm going to provide an overview of before we open it up for any public comments, and those are the construction excise tax, the low-income rental housing tax exemption, and the surplus property for housing policy. So first, the construction excise tax. This is a one-time fee on new construction. There are separate rates for residential and commercial development, and there are some types of construction are exempt, including affordable housing, public improvements, hospitals, care facilities, and others. And for the residential CET, there's a pretty specific outline of how those funds can be used through the statute, and so that includes developer incentives and housing programs that are for affordable housing, home ownership programs. And then we're able to retain a small percentage for administrative costs, which is also true of the commercial CET. The commercial CET does have a bit more flexibility. Fifty percent has to be used on housing programs, and the other fifty percent is more flexible, but we're recommending that the full hundred percent of the commercial CET revenue is also devoted to needed housing. And so we're recommending a one percent CET on residential development and a 1.5 percent on commercial and industrial development. And in response to some concerns about increasing project costs, we initially had proposed an exemption for improvements or construction that had a permit value on $50,000 and under. And now we're recommending that just the first $50,000 of permit value of any project is exempt to kind of reduce the cost burden on new construction. And that will have, you know, greater alleviate costs more for smaller projects, but will help all projects as they are encountering this new cost. And so again, the revenues would go to Affordable Housing Fund and Needed Housing Fund, and we would have the Community Development Commission charged with allocating those funds. And so we thought it would be valuable to kind of look at what the potential costs that would be associated with the CET and then also the potential benefits of the CET. And so we looked at some different types of projects and the permit valuations of those projects to estimate what they could expect to see in terms of what the cost of the CET would be on those projects. And so, of course, it does have an upfront project cost. On the other hand, the construction excise tax is one of the few ways that the city can have an ongoing revenue source to support affordable housing. And so there is a trade-off there. And we also looked at other neighboring jurisdictions to see how they were able to use their CET funds to advance affordable housing. And one of the core themes was that it really helps those jurisdictions leverage quite a bit of other outside funds that can be more challenging to do if we don't have any funds that we can use to match. And so you'll see that in Eugene and Corvallis, they were able to devote, you know, between $400,000 and $600,000 to different projects, and that was used to leverage $12 million for each of those projects. So a relatively small amount of CET brings in quite a lot of other funding. And so that's an opportunity that we don't want to miss out on. So next, I will talk about the Low-Income Rental Housing Tax Exemption Program. It's a 20-year tax exemption for regulated affordable housing projects that are providing housing that is affordable to households earning 60% of the area median income or less. And we're requiring annual compliance to demonstrate that those projects are continuing to provide affordable housing throughout the life of that exemption. And so we're recommending adopting that ordinance. And so we also wanted to take a look at what are the costs associated with providing a tax exemption. One of the challenges here is that we can't anticipate necessarily how many new affordable housing projects will come to Albany that will be eligible and receive this exemption. But we can look at what our current tax exemption program looks like and what, you know, revenue is foregone because of that exemption. And so looking at the five properties here, which amount to 96 affordable housing units, it creates a $35,000 roughly in foregone property tax. So of course, over 20 years, you'd have a multiplier effect. But that's that's kind of our best way at looking at what might we anticipate in terms of the costs associated with the foregone tax revenue. And then finally, the surplus land for housing policy. Again, we're recommending that we screen surplus city-owned land to see if it's suitable for housing, assuming that there is no other priority need that's been identified for that property. If it is suitable for housing and there is no other priority need identified, that the city will solicit proposals for housing and consider those first. That concludes my presentation.
Counsel, are there any questions? Anybody raise their hand? Okay.
We've discussed this ad nauseam at previous meetings.
I do have one question. All of these things have been on the city's website for quite a while, and I'm wondering if that's because this is considered a foregone conclusion?
I believe we have information about these on the city's website so that people are have the information that they need in order to provide any input that they'd like and know what the next steps are that we're going to so that they can come to the meeting today.
I can appreciate that. It's just we weren't voting on it till tonight. And when I saw it weeks ago, I thought, hmm, why? Why is it there when we haven't we haven't actually approved it all?
We put an ad in the paper a couple of weeks ago, so we wanted the website to be updated when the ad hit the paper so that people could find the materials about because your council agenda isn't published in time for the ad in the paper. We posted materials on the website so that people could be informed in order to provide testimony to you prior to your council package.
Thank you. And I do see quite a lot of people, so hopefully it's had the desired effect.
So these are all recommendations out of the Housing Implementation Plan, which we also received feedback on, correct?
Yes. Yeah, and we did get feedback on all of these proposals. We had numerous focus groups, and we incorporated that feedback into the final recommended proposals. And we did bring the specific detailed public feedback that we received to you at an earlier work session. I mean, since then, we did get more feedback, and I think we mentioned that in the memo. We had a housing forum November 14th, I think it was. And so that's where we kind of looked at with the CET, looking at the 50,000 exemption across the board. So we modified that after hearing some concerns.
Thank you. We will now take taking public testimony, written testimony received upon earlier today at by noon on the council's receipt. I assume we all read it. I will call in these who registered to speak first, followed by those who did not. Okay. First up is Mr. Tom Cordier. Did I say that properly? You have three minutes, sir.
Tom Cordier, North Albany. This this proposed tax is antithetical to everything I believe in. This imposing an excise tax on somebody who is willing to build a substantial home for their family is wrong. It's like going into a restaurant, and when the person at the pay line says, "Oh, I see you have a new pair of shoes on, so we're going to charge you 1% more." It's crap. Just because the state wants multi wants high-density housing and frowns on single-family dwellings as a way of socially engineering our state doesn't mean that the city ought to impose that. I'm absolutely opposed to this thing. Everybody is supposed to be treated equally. But apparently, the over time, the city has embraced this DEI crap that the rest of the country has thrown out overboard and refuses to participate in, and it's going to get worse. A lot of major companies have thrown in the towel on that crap because they've lost the focus of what are they there for? And so this city council should not be doing this. It's not it's not who our country is or even who our country wants to be. And it's similar to the to the educational elite that are now clapping for the guy who shot the United Healthcare guy.
Please stay on topic.
Pardon me?
Please stay on topic.
I'm not hearing you.
Please stay on topic.
That is in topic. That's the point, and that's the issue. If you can't even understand that it's the same topic, you got a mental problem. It is the same. It's people saying, this is this would be okay to kill this guy. And you guys are saying it's okay to establish an excise tax on somebody because they're able to make higher than. No, you took my time.
Thank you, sir.
And I'm not going to back away.
Sir, please.
Yet. You took you took my time.
Mayor. Your time is over, sir.
Pardon me?
Your time is over, sir.
Yeah. Would you apologize for taking my time?
Sir, your time is over.
Yeah, it is. But this council ought to at least delay this decision that appears to be already made. But you ought to delay it till after the first of the year.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next on tonight's next speaker is Mike Quinn.
This is a great concept, but this is Albany. And we know that this concept was paid for by grant money, grant money that the state gives us. And so we have to spend it, and, you know, half the time, I think that we need to bring some balloons and some confetti and some popcorn and come to these grant meetings like we have. And yet, it's the same stuff. You guys have made your mind up here. I've been told in-house here, but you got a couple of things up here about surplus property. If you really looked at the surplus property that Albany has, you'd be going through zoning problems and that for the next 10 years on these for affordable housing and stuff. You show all these projects that $10 million getting about $400,000 worth of CET money. But have you really looked at what's going on in Albany? You had four projects up there that totaled $11 million. But then yet, you that would be really kind of a scramble to try to get that implemented if you did this right here. And one of the things here, for every $1,000 that you add, because I know there's not too many money people up here, or not money people, but numbers people is what I want to call it. Every $1,000 you add to housing is $4,200 on a 30-year mortgage. And yet, today, this afternoon, up here, I was told, well, Mike, people don't live in their houses for 30 years. Well, I have, basically. And the thing about it is, is that still somebody is paying for that for 30 years, that house. So that extra every $1,000 you put on a couple thousand dollars, think what you're paying on a 30-year mortgage. And I want to yield the rest of my time, per Robert's Rule of Order, to John Robinson. So he should get an extra minute and a half here. Thank you.
Everyone gets three minutes, sir.
We're not bound by Robert's Rules of Order. We're not bound by Robert. It's just a guide.
He's not permitted to yield his time?
No, this is three minutes.
Because they don't want to, Mr. Quinn.
No, that's not the that's not true, Counselor. It's not the council's protocol to do that.
Next on the next speaker is Jason Cadwell.
Good evening. Just a few comments. Again, I feel like if the council, hopefully, will will take a look at even what was said a little bit earlier, that it's hard for staff to really know what projects are going to come down the line. I think that's really a key that needs to be talked about. You got to know what you're dealing with before you start trying to raise the money and tax tax people to do so. So I'd highly recommend that you really take a look at that because that's going to be super important. Don't, you know. Anyways, one thing that was there was a housing report done by Johnson Economics, and one thing that was failed to talk about, it talked about a bunch of cities or handful of cities that have implemented a CET tax. But what it did not include is that the City of Newburgh put this in and actually has stopped the program in 2023. And in fact, I want to read to you a little excerpt from the mayor's blog that he did regarding that and their take on it. Why do cities adopt CETs? First, it's easy. It can be done simply by a majority of the city council. Most large taxes must be approved by the voters. Number two, like a sin tax, most people won't oppose a tax that has been done that they think they don't pay. Number three, it creates a huge pool of money that the city council will control, whether that's city council or staff is irrelevant in this point. But this current council in Newburgh stopped the collection of these taxes April 1st, 2023. My reason is simple. We can't tax ourselves into prosperity. Two of the city's most pressing problems are we have a shortage of housing, and housing is not affordable, and that's the same thing we have here in Albany. This exacerbates the problem to solve affordability issue for a very small lucky number of recipients. The tax has collected 1.5 million. The city gets 4% for administration, and 15% goes to the county. So not all the money flows down to actual housing projects. What I'd like to offer is alternatives. The idea of surplus lands has been talked about. And while we know there's a the city owns, you know, 300-plus properties, most of those are not candidates for for housing. There, you know, a lot of floodway parks, all that sort of stuff. But there's two particular parcels I would love for people to remember that the city does own. One of those is the property in North Albany that is on Thornton Lake, between the lake and the railroad tracks. That property is bought long ago, and, you know, that's kind of one of those prime properties, but it was owned for residential. I don't believe that that may be the right place for a affordable housing quote project. However, my estimates is the property is probably worth 300, excuse me, $3 million. If I can, 30 more seconds.
No, I have three minutes, sir. Can you please give a report to the city clerk? Give us a copy.
Long and short of it, I hope that you can use there's two properties in here that would total $6 million. I think if those properties were sold and you actually take that money and invest it at a 7% interest rate, you would accumulate the same amount of revenue that you would versus doing a tax.
Thank you, sir. Next is John Robinson.
You have my full written comments. I'm going to try to be brief on this. I wish we could adjust this three minutes because we're talking about multimillion dollars here. As a contractor in Albany for 19 years, I appreciate what the city is doing, and I support many of the efforts at revising the Development Code to increase the building options, make it easier to build, and reduce the cost to build. I do, however, object to two things, the CET tax and the low-income rental housing tax exemption. The CET tax drives up the cost of one form of housing to supposedly fund or incentivize affordable housing. In my opinion, it's a Robin Hood tax. It takes from one group of people to give to another. Only 50% of the money collected is going to go to incentivize new construction. So if you collect a million dollars, you only have about half a million to sprinkle over these projects. The city gets to choose which projects, picking winners and losers in the process. Anybody that takes that money has to agree to a 60-year deed restriction to maintain the units as affordable. I did a remodel for a client in Corvallis. It was $100,000. The CET tax was $1,000. That's not an insignificant amount of money for somebody. One of my objections is the fact that there's no tax deduction. So had my client wanted to give $1,000 to a nonprofit group like Habitat Humanities to support affordable housing, he would have received a tax deduction. With the city taking the money, there's no tax deduction. There's no benefit back directly to the taxpayer. Simply put, it's a theft of money by passing an ordinance. We already have a CET tax for public schools that increases the cost of housing. If you want to reduce the cost of housing, we need to eliminate or reduce the city fees, not pile them on. Next is this rental housing tax exemption proposal. What's missing here is really an estimate as to how much tax revenue the city is not going to collect for 20 years. At a time when we're adding fees to maintain our current streets, it seems irresponsible to be giving away 20 years in the future worth of property taxes. So my question is, how does the city plan to backfill this shortfall in revenue? We can argue about the number and how much that revenue is, but how are you going to backfill it? The main thing is that there's an example in Portland, the Portland Housing Bureau. There's an article you can read about this. I'm not making this stuff up, but a city auditor found that their program program for affordable housing fell short of its goal. They're two years behind in reviewing compliance data on affordable housing units. They had no estimate. They're not tracking it. Four public requests for information from a newspaper, and they've got nothing. They estimate that their tax exemption is costing them $129 to $135 million on the current projects. current projects. Simply put, this is irresponsible government. Why would we want to bring this to Albany? Passing this would provide this, this tax exemption over 20 years is kicking the can down the road. I believe by that time, obviously there'll be a different council, different mayor. I think those council and mayor are going to be looking back on today and they're going to be asking why you made this decision.
Thank you, John.
The, the simple thing is, is this the future you want to leave to your children and grandchildren? Is this a footnote in history you want next to your name?
Thank you, sir.
Next is Brad Dennis.
Hi, I'm Brad Dennis, I'm chair of the North Albany Neighborhood Association. I've spoken before the council before on tax increases that were put in place without a vote of the people. First of all, I spoke about the $9 fee that was added on to our utility bills that I opposed. And then secondly, I've talked to the city council before about what makes housing unaffordable. Let me just reiterate that before. High interest rates caused by the US government spending money that they don't have and, and policy related to, that drives up fuel costs. Hopefully both of these situations will be reversed, starting in January with the new administration. Couple of points I'd like to make regarding tonight's discussion is, one, the city staff is hired full-time to look at these issues, and we want to get input from citizens, but many citizens are working full-time and then they get home and they've got family commitments, and they don't really have time to look at these projects. And so it, it makes it seem like the city doesn't really get good input until we come to a meeting like this, and then there's lots of objections to it. So I really would like to suggest that this tax be put out to a vote of the, the public and, and, and see what you get there. And during my three minutes that I'll get during the meetings from the public, I'm going to talk a little bit about, more about sending things to a vote of the people. So I'll be back.
Thank you. Matthew Fitchett? Did I say that right?
Fitchett. In short, I'm, I am supportive of housing.
Please tell us who you are and.
Matthew Fitchett.
And we live where?
1140 10th Avenue Southwest, Albany, Oregon.
Thank you.
So in short, I think it would be wonderful if housing was more affordable in Albany. A couple of things about that, I don't see housing becoming more affordable. Subsidized housing, as opposed to affordable housing, can be more affordable, but everyone just has to understand that someone else pays for that. And at times, I think that's okay. I think that there are a lot of people in Albany who are fortunate enough to own a home or rent a single-family home or have an apartment that's market rate, and just because they can afford those things doesn't necessarily mean that it's easy or they're thriving every single month financially or socially or emotionally. And I think it's just important to point out that by my calculations, the median sale price in Albany for a house, you would be raising the price $15 a month, which does not sound like a huge sum of money. Most houses in Albany, if you were to build it and sell it to someone, is probably not 1,500 square feet with a valuation of $280,000 on the permit. It's most likely a little bit higher than that. So that dollar amount monthly would be higher. However, as a council, a utility service fee of $9 was passed recently. There's the transportation fee that's going to go on a utility bill coming up shortly. I believe it was in the last year and a half that a school construction excise tax was placed on permits. So all of these things do add up. So although one $15 charge on a permit does not seem significant, just remember that it, it is in conjunction with all of these other costs, and they do add up on people who live and work in our community. If you do pass this, I would hope that this fee would not be collected at time of permit issuance, but at time of certificate of occupancy, which I know that there is a push to do that with SDCs as well. It's just one more cost that typically is borrowed from day one of a project, but before that project is really put into use. And I think that that's something that's reasonable with most costs associated with building, to delay it until time of occupancy, which I know that Matthew Rutgers with the Community Development Commission is pushing for with SDCs. But I would like to see it, if you guys are so inclined to push this through and vote this through, that you ask that this be pushed off till time of occupancy as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We will now be taking public comment for those who did not register to speak beforehand. If you would like to speak, please raise your hand, and I will call upon you. If you're attending online, in person, you are attending virtually, please turn on your camera and raise your hand to speak, to be called upon, or if you're attending by phone, please unmute your phone yourself and your name and tell us your name, you'll be called on. You're not registered to speak, right? Please. I didn't see your name on here. Well, that was business from the public who signed up for. This is the public hearing. Go ahead, you have time. You have three minutes.
I'm Mark Signer, builder, live in North Albany. The way, I just wrote down a few notes here, and they're just my thoughts, and anti, added tax is going to be anti-growth. I just feel like you're putting the burden on builders, they're going to slow down, they're taking a risk anyway to build something out of their pocket, and when you tax them more, add more permit fees, those kind of things slow this housing down that you're trying to promote, so it's almost antithetical to what you're trying to do. So that's one of my notes here. There's few people that are willing to take the risk that it, that there is to build something. You know, you might have a Hayden Homes or someplace like that that have bigger pockets, you might be a smaller guy like myself, but there's not a ton of people out there that are willing to take that risk. And any risk that, any added cost or that risk makes us slow down again. Cost of every project's going to get passed down. So if you add cost, you know, whether it's 1% or 5% or whatever, those are going to get passed down to the consumer, and so they're going to pay more whether it's in the house cost or the rent cost or whatever it is. So I think you have to consider those things. Tax revenue from undeveloped, if you slow progress down, if you slow growth down, the tax revenue that you will receive from no growth is very little. You could have an unimproved lot that's worth $100,000, and you're going to get X amount of dollars for your tax base, but then if you improve that to a $2 million project or $5 million project on that lot, you will receive, you know, added costs or added tax, property tax that will then fund some of these programs that you're trying to do. I feel bad for the next generation, you know, my kids, you know, young people, they can't afford things, you know, and so adding more hoops and more bureaucracy and more cost, I think is kind of the wrong way of approaching it. So, you know, and I'm, you know, I get into politics or anything, but I, I just feel like these kind of things have to be considered. So I'm just throwing it out there, I hope you guys have good common sense, I'm trying to be commonsensical, so that's all.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else, please?
Rich Kellum, 485 East Commercial Way. Any expense you put on a project, be, be it a dollar or 50 billion, ends up being paid by the person who either buys it or rents it or whatever it is. Plus, if you expense, expense that through a builder, they're going to have to add a profit. One way or another, this costs the end user more money. Now, I think that should be your question. Is it okay to charge her so her or someone else can have a better place? That's, it's a value judgment. And, you know, I, I think it's one that always comes back to slap us in the face. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you. Does a staff member wish to respond to any testimony presented?
Yeah, thank you. And there's no one online that wants to testify?
I didn't see anybody.
All right. I just, there were just a couple of comments, I just wanted to provide some clarification, and then we would be happy to answer any questions you may have about any testimony that you heard. We do appreciate everyone's comments tonight, and one of the, the comments was that only 50% of the funds raised would go to new construction, and I just wanted to clarify that the residential construction excise tax, 100% of that would go to supporting affordable housing developments. The commercial construction excise tax, only half of those funds need to go to housing. It can be market rate housing, it doesn't need to be affordable housing. And only the developments that are incentivized that are affordable housing would have that 60-year affordability period. So all of the construction excise tax that would be on commercial properties, all of those funds, there's a lot of flexibility for how those can be used to support our housing needs. So I just wanted to clarify that. The only other thing I was going to say is, Mr. Fitchett noted that it'd be great if the CET could be charged and deferred. Unfortunately, the way state law is written, it's in state law, it has to be collected at the time of building permit, but all of your other fees will soon be able to be delayed at the time you, you pick up your occupancy permit. So unfortunately, we, we were hoping we could do that, and then state law doesn't allow us to do that. I think that's all I was going to respond to, just for, for clarification.
Could I add one thing? So also the distribution of the residential CET, I believe someone had mentioned, I think Jason mentioned that 15% of that goes to the county. In fact, it goes to Oregon Housing and Community Services, a state agency who then runs the Home Ownership Assistance Program, and that funding does go back to Albany home buyers. And so it may seem like it doesn't benefit Albany, but it does go back to our community to support home buyers here.
Does the city council wish to question this? Questions of staff?
I have.
So just a minute. We have, we have people, who's first, please? Counselor Neuzer?
I had just a quick question. So it's true that an apartment building or something like that could be purchased, it's an already existing apartment building, can be transitioned to low-income housing. Can you explain maybe how that, how, if, if a tax would be assessed there or?
So it's the value of the improvement, and then you subtract, it's the building permit value. It's not necessarily the cost, doesn't include any of the land or the existing structure, but whatever it costs to do the renovation, minus the $50,000 on that building permit, the construction cost. Now, if you're just doing electrical and general repairs, if it's not construction and it's just repairs, it would, it would be different, but it's, we're really talking about a tax on new construction. So new added square feet, new usable area.
Counselor Novak, you were next.
I didn't say anything.
Well, I thought you had your hand up.
No, thank you, though.
Counselor Smith?
Question about, a comment, and I can't remember who made it, was that the, the city controls how the CET is spent. What I read in the staff report, and I believe what you said earlier, was that that money would be distributed by decisions made by the Community Development Commission, like CBG money is.
Correct. So there would be applications for the funds, and we would work with the Community Development Commission, and of course, this is up to you to determine that, but that was what we recommended, and we hadn't heard any concerns, to come up with program recommendations. It's going to take a while for any funds to be collected and enough revenue to have enough to award, but assess the greatest needs and give you a proposal for how the funds that are collected for the residential CET, what the priorities might be, and then what the priority, priorities might be for the funds collected with the commercial CET, which is not restricted to affordable housing. And then that way, we get your council's buy-in on what you feel are the priority projects, and then we would use the Community Development Commission because we already have an application process for projects, and they're used to reviewing these kinds of things, have them review applications. But those details can be determined by you and the process as well.
One other question.
You guys want more, and we'll go to you.
My other question is, I, I know that this is parallel to changes that have been made in state law. Do we have a deadline for adopting any new policies here?
No, these are recommended policies that aren't required, the city isn't required to do any of these. Now, the city currently hasn't been required to do a housing production strategy, that's going to be a requirement of 2028. When that happens, we will then be required to show how, it's more specific targets that we're going to need to try to figure out how, even though we don't build, how are we going to support the development of housing that is affordable? You know, having this many units affordable, the household's owning 30%, 60%, 80%. And if we haven't evaluated all sorts of programs after a certain period of time, if we're not actually achieving any of the targets or we're falling really short, we'll be required to evaluate all the tools in the toolbox. And this is one of those. Now, there are other tools out there to raise money, and you heard about, you know, selling city land to do that, that we looked at with the bond, and, you know, some of these just didn't get a lot of support. There was actually a, a Housing Affordability Task Force, which the mayor served on, and Mr. Quinn was appointed to that, and numerous people from representing the spectrum of housing, and they evaluated all the different tools, and the ones that we're bringing forward to you are the ones that had, we felt were the most, the best fit for Albany, and that there's really a spectrum of tools that are needed in your toolbox because different developers, and these are market rate builders and, and for-profit and nonprofit builders of affordable housing need a variety of tools to make housing pencil. And so that's why we're bringing forward a package of tools, and not every development would use all three of the tools or maybe just one tool, so.
I apologize, I have one follow-up question. How long has the school excise tax been assessed?
I, I don't know the answer to that. I mean, I think it's been on my tax bill since I've been home on her.
Thank you.
It, it is a fee, yeah, that we collect.
Thanks.
Counselor Novak?
Thank you. I'm also curious about what Counselor Smith just asked with, I don't know if our city manager has an answer to, answer to that. This isn't my question, but because Counselor Smith asked, did the school excise tax, do you know how long that's been in force? No?
I, I do not.
Okay. 2009, thank you, Mr. Quinn. Ding ding ding, give the man a prize. Yeah. Yeah, since 2009, that was a few days ago.
Please address your questions of staff.
Yes, I will, thank you. I'd like to not lose my train of thought. I think the state passes some laws that have really good intent, but some really crappy features, like middle housing. Middle housing is good, but the way that law is in place has some really negative repercussions. The more I have learned about these three options, the CET, the LARHT, and the surplus land, the more I realize that I cannot in any way support them, and one thing I would like to. And one thing I would like to know from staff, which is something that one of the concerned citizens wrote about, is how exactly is the city planning on dealing with 20-year no-tax revenue? How are we going to, what's the plan here? If we give all of these, suppose it helps with low-income housing, if they get their 20-year rent bring, where is that revenue coming from? Are we creating, or is, what's the plan? Are we going to create more fees to go on the utility bill? I'd really like to know how you're going to deal with all of that lack of revenue.
There are so many variables involved in that projection that if you wanted us to take a good look at it, we'd have to go back and do that and come back and report to you.
Well, that's, forgive me, with all due respect, kind of a non-answer. I just think that's a really important consideration. And I hope that the incoming council will bear this in mind because you want to give all these tax breaks, again, and do these things that on some level it sounds good, it might work, it might help, but when reality comes in, as with middle housing, and I'll say specific to North Albany, because middle housing on First Avenue makes sense. Middle housing in many areas of this city makes sense. But middle housing in North Albany and where we already have extreme traffic issues, we've had a meeting with state representative, my state representative, whose name I just forgot, Shelley Bosshart Davis, and the ODOT and city staff and some of us counselors and concerned citizens who live in that area, we're experiencing even now the fallout of the state's well-intentioned idea for creating more affordable housing. I look at these things, I hear what people are saying, and I think this is more of the same. Well-intentioned, you betcha. Feasible, workable, not having the desired negative, not having any negative effects, wrong. It's, the things, you say it's an unintended consequence, but I could tell you, anyone who lives in, and I'll just keep it in my area, North Albany, can tell you that any additional housing you build, low-income or otherwise, is only going to exacerbate the issues we already have there. Again, I'm not saying there's anything wrong with middle housing, but I would appreciate if staff would consider, as they did on First Avenue, I use that because I drive that every day, there are places where it makes sense. There are other places where it does not. So again, my bottom-line point here is, A, I'm really concerned about if council were to pass this LARHT, there would be a tremendous shortfall of income revenue for 20 years everywhere that it's implemented. And I find that terrifying, given the city's general response of not, when you can't fund something, you just create another fee. And it's another line item on a utility bill that, as someone else pointed out, you add them all up and it becomes untenable. It becomes, I know people, quite a few people actually, who've left the town of Albany, left the state of Oregon. Councilor Smith mentioned recently that over 130,000 people exited the state. We have lower birth rates. I don't honestly understand the push for more and more housing. We have a shrinking population, not a booming, growing population. Yes, we have problems with housing affordability, but that doesn't mean the answer is slapping any kind of housing you can up everywhere you possibly can. I'll stop now, but that is pretty much my concern with all of this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilor Novak.
Mayor?
Councilor Monogue, do you have anything?
I can respond to her question. She did have a question about, you know, what would the impact be to the city on lost revenue? Well, this is on new development that currently isn't bringing in developed property revenue. So we're talking about, I mean, we have very few affordable housing developments in Albany. We don't really have any incentives to attract affordable housing to Albany. We didn't get some incentive money from the state, the million dollars, you may remember that, Sun of L 5561 money. We were able to incentivize a couple of developments. Most of them were already in works. And so, I mean, I can't imagine there'd be more than one or two every couple of years. And so if it's, you know, we don't know what the maximum assessed value will be on those future ones, but using our existing properties, you know, the 96 units, $35,000 a year, and these are sort of deeply affordable, they're affordable for people earning 60% or below of their median income. And so that's where we have the greatest need and it's the hardest to make pencil. All the tax savings have to be passed on in the form of reduced rents. So, I mean, the benefit is that we have housing that is serving a lot of our residents' needs and it may be a small cost annually, it depends. I mean, it's all a perspective, who's paying? I understand. I'm just trying to provide a response because we can't, I mean, I can't imagine we would have five developments coming forward a year. And they're only going to be building in areas where we allow multi-dwelling unit development. So that's not in our single and middle housing zones. Just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you. Councilor, Councilor Kupczynski?
Just a general comment. It's an interesting dichotomy from my perspective in that we try and chase after major developments, major industrial firms, and we have all sorts of enterprise zones, all sorts of tax abatement processes for them. But now we're quibbling about toughing for, that we're doing the same thing for residential or anything like that. I don't, I don't see the conundrum at all.
Councilor McGee?
I have a few, few things to say. Just as I know that this is a sensitive topic for people, please bear in mind that when you come up to this podium, you should have some respect. And when you are addressing folks on this dais and pointing at people, it's not okay. And being disrespectful to the rules that are in this council is not okay. Please conduct yourself with some decorum and some point of order in here. I understand that this is a situation, I understand people are passionate about it, but the way that you talk to people and the way that you're addressing this room needs to be reevaluated and you need to check yourself at the door and watch how you are, your tone when speaking to folks on this dais. And people that are sitting on this dais need to uphold some decorum as well.
Thank you. Councilor Monogue?
So I just wanted to kind of point out and address a comment that was made earlier about the difficulty of people coming to these meetings. You know, people have, you know, potentially children at home, full-time working, all of that. I just want us to appreciate that those people that we are trying to help with, with these policies are probably facing even more challenges. Those who are at the 60% of the area income probably have even more obstacles. So probably not well-represented in these kinds of meetings. So I just wanted to acknowledge that and point that out.
Go ahead, Councilor Smith.
One final question, and I swear it will be. The tax exemption applies, and I believe you said this, I'm just confirming it, that it applies to improvements on the property, not the base land or what is already there. Like if there's, if somebody starts adding on to something, an existing building, that portion would be exempt? Or is it just the land that continues to be taxed at the current rate?
Well, it's, it's the property that is tax exempt. So on the CET, on that fee, it's only on the improvement.
Okay.
So it's mixing the two up. And when I spoke earlier, I mean, yes, sir, we are receiving some taxes, taxes from the value of the land, but it is for the property. And right now, I mean, we would only be, we haven't talked to the county or the school district, so these would just be exemptions for city taxes. And unless we get another taxing jurisdiction to get over 51%, I mean, this tool may or may not be one that is enough to, weren't coming, you know, to the city to apply for. So we're still working on that.
Thank you.
So, Councilor Newton?
I have a few questions. I apologize. Okay, so bear with me. So I wanted to just double-check, so that can the tax be used when purchasing an existing, existing market rate apartment and then transitioning that to low-income housing? Or is it just on the additional square footage or?
Yeah, so the CET programs, we will determine what, what those needs are, but if you're converting an existing apartment to affordable housing, then yes, I believe that, you know, the CET funds, we determine whether that's an eligible use. And the residential stuff has to go for the affordable housing and the construction, sorry, the commercial fee is more flexible. So yes.
And then I wanted to get some more clarification, just, I feel like Councilor Novak brought up a few, few things I wanted to have addressed. Will you explain any specific criteria for qualifying for exemption or how the city will ensure that maybe some exemptions aren't being abused?
I'm sorry, are you asking about exemptions to paying the CET?
For low-income housing exemptions.
Oh, so to come in for the low-income rental housing tax exemption. So they will have to submit an application, they will have to verify their income lease up rates, they will be reporting to us annually, that's something that we're requiring, and they will have to pay back any waived, you know, abated taxes if they are out of compliance. So we will be monitoring that.
Fantastic. Thank you.
So my comments are, this will probably end up coming back next year. So I understand people's disagreements with this, these proposals. That's why we have public discussion, that's why we have announcements and public hearings. So I appreciate that. But one thing I do have an issue with is the conduct of people when they come to council. Some people are very disrespectful and it's a problem and it's, has continued, it has happened before, and I hope that people will do better next time they come to council. And with that, I will now close the public hearing at 6:56 PM. Does the city council wish to discuss the policies? There are three ordinances, there are ordinances with exhibits for your consideration in your council packet. There are also motions for your consideration on the dais. Will the city counsel, city attorney, please read the construction excise tax ordinance entitled only?
An ordinance amending the Albany Municipal Code, A and C Title III by creating Chapter 3.09 and enacting a housing construction excise tax.
Would this council like to make a motion to read the ordinance a second time entitled only?
A move we haven't read a second time entitled only?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no?
No.
Thank you. We'll bring that one back.
And mayor, because that one's going to be brought back, I would recommend that we don't deal with the resolution on that tonight either. We'll just skip that and go into, we'll have that come back next year as well.
Okay. And then we'll do the low income?
Yes.
Okay. Will the city attorney please read the low-income rental housing tax exemption ordinance entitled only?
An ordinance adopting the provisions of Oregon Revised Statute, ORS Sections 303.515 through 307.535 to establish a low-income rental housing property tax exemption.
Would the council like to make a motion to read the ordinance a second time entitled only?
A move we read the second, the title, the second entitled only?
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no?
No.
We'll bring that back as well.
And same with that resolution on item four.
A city-owned surplus land resolution, would the council, would the council like to make a motion? Do we bring that one back too or no?
We don't have a motion yet.
Would the council like to make a motion to adopt the resolution?
I'll do that. I move that the city council adopt the resolution creating procedures for the evaluation and sale of surplus city-owned property for needed housing.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no?
No.
Would the city, would the city clerk do a roll call, please?
There we go. Councilor McGee?
Yes.
Councilor Novak?
No.
Councilor Newton Azor?
Yes.
Councilor Kupczynski?
Yes.
Councilor Monogue?
Yes.
Councilor Smith?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Six to one.
Six to one.
Thank you.
Five to one.
Five to one.
Five to one.
Yes.
Next is business from the public on the agenda, item four. Business from the public is a time for Albany residents to speak and to the council, having the council to listen. The city council will discuss the topic and make decisions during business from the public, but will take the comments and requests under advisement. Speakers are limited to three minutes and must follow the council rules and observations. These glasses are terrible. Observe the same standards of decorum. If unable to do so, they will be asked to step down and take, take a seat in the audience or for the rest of the meeting. Will, when we get to the microphone, please give your name and state whether you live in Albany. Mr. Dennis? Brad Dennis?
Hi, I'm Brad Dennis. Yes, I do live in the city of Albany. I am the chair of the North Albany Neighborhood Association. One point that was made by Councilor Novak was the transportation meeting that was held at the request of North Albany Neighborhood Association with ODOT, Benton County, and the city of Albany. I've confirmed with the chief of staff for Shelley Bosshart Davis that we should have the minutes from that meeting, hopefully by the end of this week. I know they're busy in Salem getting ready for the next session. And hopefully there'll be some action items that we can begin to work on to address traffic issues in North Albany. There are times when citizens don't agree with a resolution that may be passed. And in that case, the city ordinance 5059 allows citizens to submit a referendum petition within 30 days. And I was reading that resolution tonight and it states that you need signatures from 10% of the voters in the city of Albany, which of course, that's some in Benton County, some in Lynn County. It's a little bit complicated to get that number and I don't know how many signatures would need to be raised if a person ever wanted to refer a resolution that was passed. But I propose that there's a simpler way to set this number. And, and so I'm suggesting that to update this ordinance 5059 to just make it based on 10% of the number of votes cast for all mayoral candidates in the previous election. That's a number that's easy to determine. In fact, it's going to be stated here later in the meeting that our mayor received approximately 17,000 votes. And that's real easy math. 17,000 times 10% would be 1,700, 1,700 signatures for a referendum. So that's, that's what I would recommend, is that changing that ordinance to make the balance of power a little bit less in favor of. It's, it's easy for the city government to propose things and they pass it, and it's really difficult for citizens who may object to that to, to have a say and to try and override it. And so I'm asking for an update to that ordinance 5059 to, to make the calculation of the number of signatures a little bit easier, basing it on the number of votes cast for mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Signer? Okay. Mike, would you like to, just three minutes? Mr. Quinn?
I'm just wanting to talk to about, okay, of course, Mike Quinn here in Albany, whatever. The, the state always passes that legislation, which is coming up, they pass what they call statutes, most of you guys should know that. But the city gets to have the interpretational powers of it. I'm speaking specifically on this excise tax. The thing about it is, State Department will fight you if you try to get it to where it can be paid at the end because back when they were trying to get an SDC on building of $8,000, they actually passed the CET tax with the school districts and stuff. So the school districts, we- So the school districts, we were the first school district in the state to impose it. We jumped right at it. The thing about it is, the state, we went after them with the O B I A, Oregon Building and Industries Association, and basically fought the Department of Revenue because they didn't want people to pay for it at closing because then it would be a tax write-off. So if you want to start using your attorney here to find out tax law and everything else, you will find that out. You're not going to be able to do it unless, you know, maybe the mayor can go up there and talk to the governor and that, you know, and say, hey, we want to be able to write this off because in our business, it's a hard cost of doing business. And then we have to for like four or five months and stuff, have to pay, you know, our interest in that on it. We lose a little bit of investment money on that. But you'll never be able to deduct a excise tax at the end. That's why they make you pay it at the beginning. So it's a, basically a cost of doing business. And that's all I wanted to get at.
Thank you. Next is Downtown Association Executive Director, Lisa Grotto.
Good evening. Lisa Grotto, Executive Director, Albany Downtown Association. And I just wanted to bring a little holiday cheer to your evening. Wanted to thank everyone who participated in the downtown twice around Christmas parade and community tree lighting, and especially the council members who came and brought family. Also would love to thank the folks that make that possible each year. Each year, the tree is donated by a warehouse or transported by ram trucking. Pacific Power expertly lifts it into place. And then the city's Public Works Team adds lights and ornaments that are provided by the Downtown Association. The funding comes from hotel tax and donations. It's not city dollars. Due to the tree's wispy branches, only limited lightweight ornaments can be added. This year's tree is a Douglas fir. They weren't able to go up onto the mountain and get a noble fir due to the snowpack. Also wanted to thank those who came to First Friday. We had the trolley out and carolers from West Albany High. The South Albany students were at the tree lighting. So we enjoyed both of the schools and hope Albany Auctions will join us in the future in some project. The annual parlor tours were delightful if anyone had a chance to go. The holiday windows still are throughout the downtown, so please take a minute to shop local and enjoy all the holiday fun that we have to offer in downtown. And there are a few things left. We do have Sleigh Bell Sings Christmas Caroling at December 13th, 14th, 20th, and 21st. That's a, done up by the Montithouse, hop aboard the Chafin Farms horse-drawn wagons, do some caroling, and that's just a wonderful opportunity. We're also going to have a downtown holiday poster hunt. We have a, an intern, Eileen, has said that she wants to do 40 different holidays. So they will be holidays from Christmas to Hanukkah to Juneteenth to Labor Day. You'll go around to different windows with your kiddos and look at those. And of course, Whitespires Christmas Eve program, traditional caroling, 7:00 to 8:00 PM at Whitespires on Christmas Eve. So our volunteer spotlight, we thanked Santa Claus. He has come downtown in many ways this year, by train, by fire truck, and just dropping in. So we appreciate his volunteerism and bringing joy to our town. So that's all I have to say this evening. Happy holidays and thank you all.
Thank you very much, Reg.
Mr. Mayor, I think Lisa might correct me if I'm wrong, but this would be a good opportunity to wish her a happy birthday.
That's what I was going to do.
Oh, happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
I'm not going to sing, trust me.
I was going to sing.
You don't want me to sing.
I was going to sing.
No, you don't.
I was a little scared, Mr. Kellam.
So I'll tell you why I'm not singing. My daughter was three years old. I started singing to her. She started crying and stuck her hand in my mouth. It's not happening. So did you, next on tonight's, would anybody like a bio break? I need, take, take five minutes or 10 minutes. Thank you. We're now reconvening meeting at 7:16. I do appreciate your patience. This time of year, I work from like 5:00 in the morning to, I've come here. So I need to go see a man about a horse. I did not get through all the people that signed up through business from the public. So Mr. Kellam, you have the floor for three minutes, sir?
Hey, Southeast, for a little while longer, and then I'm going to be in Millersburg. Because I'm selling the place. I'm, I'm not from the government and I'm here to help you. I have $400,000 and I want to make your budget process a little easier. Now that I got your attention. We're dealing with a time, most of which, when you have a budget problem, the word goes out, we need to find ways to either get more money or spend less money. And that has happened numerous times in the past. And what I want to do is have a system so people are always looking. And when they come up with something good, they get an award for it. A monetary award. So I set up Stand Against the Wind. It is a 501(c)(3). And it would give awards to regular citizens, to employees, to politicians, to whomsoever. I have checked with the state and there is not a problem for anybody receiving the award, as she explained to me, because Stand Against the Wind does not receive anything from the city or from the county or whomsoever. So, and it's not my money anymore after I give it to them, so it's no big deal. You notice there are two sheets. First, kind of a process, how it happens. People could be nominated by fellow people from, from people who deal with them all the time or their supervisors or et cetera. That nomination would then be vetted by the board. And there would be a, if it is truly a savings for the taxpayer. Always worrying in the, in the, in the back of my mind, gee, did somebody raise the budget and then cut some of it and say they saved some money? That kind of stuff is not, wouldn't be able to be happening. But the second sheet has some questions for you. And it's you and/or staff or anyone else you think of. And then also, what I'm trying to do is set this up so it's easy. So the people who deserve credit get credit. And, you know, how much it should be, how often it should happen. There would be about, when it's fully funded, there would be about between $30,000 and $40,000 a year available.
Thank you, Reg. So I'm going to invite you, because you are a 501(c)(3), I'd like you to contact Mary Dibble about coming into a future council meeting. I'll give you a 10-minute presentation.
Okay, fine.
That work?
Works for me.
Okay, thank you. I do that for local nonprofits since the pandemic started.
It has nothing to do with us knowing each other.
Well, you did sing "Happy Birthday" to me one time. Thank you, Reg.
I missed it last time.
Thank you. Next on tonight's agenda is Award of Contract. Item A, W T P 24 dash 01, A M W P T Generator and Award of Contract. Nolan Nelson, pages 24 to 26 in your packet. I did.
So members from the public.
If you didn't sign up, I did say, if you didn't sign up, please come on.
I didn't sign up, but I, but I didn't hear a request that I would be able to come.
Then my apologies. If you'd like to speak to the council for three minutes and you did not sign up, please come on.
Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Tom Cordier, North Albany. I was, attended the school board meeting on Monday night of this week, which was the first meeting after the strike. And it's clear that the school board used to have a $15 million contingency fund. And we're operating at a $5 million loss this year. And it's projected to be a $5 million loss next year and the following year. And in addition to that, the PERS costs have gone up. And you may know that the governor authorized, maybe the legislature authorized a 6% increase for all state employees, but only a 3% for the, an increase of 3% to the school districts. And, 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 and they're appealing to the governor to make that equal in terms of what the state employees got and what teachers have available to them. And you may know that the strike resulted in substantial increases to teachers, which was negotiated. And my, my request is that the, the council or the city manager or the mayor would appeal to the governor to make that correction to provide school districts with an equivalent amount of funding increase that the state employees got.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
I will, I'll reach out to you and get more information.
I didn't hear you.
I'll reach out to you and get more information.
Okay.
So anyone else like to speak to council for three minutes? Hearing none, thank you. Next on tonight's agenda, item five, Award of Contract. Officer, excuse me, Mr. Nolan, will you please come up and talk with us about it? Oh, you changed your hair. Stacy Buck Cash will be speaking for, on the topic.
Good evening, Mayor and councilors. Staff is recommending that council, by motion, waive a minor bid irregularity and award a contract to J Q Construction. This is for installation of a generator at the Albany Millersburg Water Treatment Plant. We received five bids in response for, to the advertisement for this project, ranging from the low bid of $319,732 to the high bid of approximately $466,000. The minor bid irregularity that we are asking council to waive occurred because the city's security program that is used to filter suspicious emails, it put J Q's bid in a quarantine folder. We did not realize this until after the bids were opened. J Q's bid was submit, was complete and it was submitted well in advance. JQ's bid was submit, was complete and it was submitted well in advance of the bid opening. So they did not receive any advantage over the four contractors that submitted bids. The project's going to include improvements to install a generator at the Albany-Millersburg Water Treatment Plant. This will enable the plant to receive raw water, treat it so that it's drinkable in the event that we have a power outage at the plant. Council approved a contract for the city to purchase the generator that will be installed under this contract at a council meeting last spring. I think it was in March. And this generator is expected to arrive in February of 2025. Let's see, the funding for the purchase of the generator and the work that will be completed under this contractor is a combination of water capital funds. And then council also authorized the use of the American Rescue Act Plan Funds, the ARPA funds. Are there any questions?
Counsel, do we have a motion?
I move, we approve the authorization of the contract to JP Enterprises.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed, say no. Thank you. Next, on adoption from the consent calendar, I just received a request to remove item...
7D.
7D. And so, would you like to talk about that now?
Well, Chief LaBelle is standing by to talk about it after you, if you approve your consent calendar, the rest of it, then we'll go to Chief LaBelle.
Anything else on this consent calendar that people want to discuss?
I'm confused because consent calendar is number six on my...
Oh, it's actually, it's number six.
It's 6D. It is 6D.
Thank you. Sorry about that. My mind is redacted, so.
I'll move adoption of the remainder of the consent calendar except for 6D.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Thank you. Now, Chief LaBelle?
And while he comes up here, Mr. Mayor, I'll just say that because it's an approval, a council approval of an exemption from competitive bidding, it should not appear on the consent calendar.
Okay, good evening, Mayor and council. I'll keep this super brief. So the request before you this evening is approval for exemption from competitive bidding and special procurement for a new emergency response software. The current software that we use is a company called Incident View. And they are going out of business in March. So we had to transition and do basically an internal survey of a couple of different companies that were out there. There was only one company that met all the requirements that we had for our response software. That company is called First Do. There's also other departments in our area that will also be switching to this new response software. So we are actually getting regional pricing, so there is a price break for us. The hope is that if approved, this new software would be brought on board into January, give our crews an opportunity for about a month of trading. And then, March 1st, we would be ready to implement this new program. There would be no issues whatsoever to our response capabilities. And I would be happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Counsel?
Yes. Chief, the company, existing company went out of business. So what happens in this interim between the time we actually...
We have until March. Yeah, they're going out of business in March. So they gave us a couple of months, but they only told us a couple of months ago this was happening. So there was kind of a scramble between all the departments in the area that use this company. But luckily, we came across this First Do that actually provides a better service for us. So it's kind of a blessing in disguise.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
So I do have a question. Are we contract in with them or is there any refund coming back?
Or? No, it was due to be, it was going to end in January anyways.
Okay, so, okay, great. Any other councils have any questions? Thank you. We have a motion?
I move, we approve the exemption from competitive bidding and special procurement for navigation software, First Do.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Thank you, counsel. Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Item seven, does everybody have first reading ordinances on item seven?
Okay.
First reading of ordinances, a central Albany parking area permit, zone expansion. Officer Shindel, pages 65 and 66 in your packet.
And Your Honor, he spoke on this Monday night.
Oh, that's right.
I didn't know if council wants him to come back up. I think he's here, but...
Counsel, would you like to hear from Officer Shindel again on the topic? Okay, counsel?
I'll go ahead and read the ordinance.
Go ahead and read ordinance for the first time in title only?
An ordinance submitting the Albany Municipal Code AMC Section 13.21.112 Sub-A, Central Albany Parking Area.
Would the council like to make a motion to read the ordinance for the second time in title only?
I make a motion, you read the motion the second time in title only.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Say no. Thank you. Would the city attorney please read the ordinance for the second time in title only?
An ordinance submitting the Albany Municipal Code AMC Section 13.21.112 Sub-A, Central Albany Parking Area.
Would the council like to make a motion, oh, is there any discussion? Sorry. Any discussion? Would the council like to make a motion to adopt the ordinance?
I'll move to adopt the ordinance.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Ordinance passes.
Want me to go ahead and read the next one or?
You only go make, let me get my mic back on track here. Item B, 7B, is Albany Municipal Code 13.90, private property impounds. Officer Shindel. And council like to hear any more from him? Okay, so, would the city attorney please read the ordinance the first time in title only?
An ordinance repealing Albany Municipal Code, Chapter 13.90, Private Property Impounds.
Would the council like to make a motion to read the ordinance for the first, second time in title only?
Move to read the ordinance the second time in title only.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Say no. Would the city attorney please read the ordinance the second time in title only?
An ordinance repealing Albany Municipal Code, Chapter 13.90, Private Property Impounds.
Would the council like to make a motion, would you like to discuss any further? I imagine I missed a discussion on Monday. Would the council like to make a motion to adopt the ordinance?
I move, we adopt the ordinance.
All those in favor, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Thank you. Next one, staff reports, eight, item eight, multi-unit property tax exemption, MUPD. Final review, Sophie Adams, pages 93 to 100 in your packet.
Good evening. So like your packet says, this is the final review of the MUPD, Multi-Unit Property Tax Exemption Program. Matthew Rutgers, our Community Development Director, unfortunately can't be here. So I'm going to try my best to wear both hats. But if there's something that I can't answer, then I'll make sure to get that information and bring it back to you. So last time we brought this to you, this was back in March. We talked about what MUPD is, how it works, the ORS that allows cities to implement this program. And we spent time talking about the different public benefits. We took your feedback and we also took feedback from staff and some other folks in the community, incorporated that into the materials that are in your packet. So like I say, in the packet is the draft program guide that outlines the applicable projects, public benefits, admin processes, and has a map of the boundary. One quick note regarding the map, the area looks pretty large when you look at it on the map. But remember that only zones within the boundary where multi- and mixed-use development is permitted already through our zoning, that would, those are the only areas that would be eligible within that boundary. And it could be pared down further if you wanted. So what's new from last time we were here? The public benefits list now includes an option for local labor and materials or ownership, which was a recommendation from your group, and also for workers to be paid a higher wage. And we also included a tiered approach to the abatement tied to how many public benefits a project provides. And that was also a request from the last time you reviewed it. So what we're looking from you today is just kind of a head nod that we're on the right track with the feedback that you provided last time, now that you've seen the draft program guide. And if you have any additional questions as well, and if not, that's okay. We'll be back in the early months of the new year with the final materials and for approval. That's it.
Counsel Novak?
Thanks. I have a question. If the construction folks are paying a higher wage to their employees to build the, whatever it is they're constructing, whether it's commercial or residential, whatever, is it not logical that somehow that increases their cost, of course? And then that cost increase would also be passed on to the recipient of the end result of the project? I'm just saying, that's going to make it more expensive to build anything, whether it's a residence or a, because there's a lot of talk about living wage jobs. And I can respect that, but every time we even raise minimum wage, the cost of everything goes up. So I think that's applicable to what you're saying here. And I think that when you come back on this next year, you just might want to be aware of things like that. Every time you add money or tax or whatever to a project, the end result is that someone's paying more.
Sure thing. You're right, and that is not a requirement of this program to pay a higher wage. But it's one of the recommendations from the council last time, so we added it as an option. If someone wanted to provide that, then that would qualify as one of the public benefits, but it's not required. I should also say that some of the public benefits are required by ORS. That one is not. So if you chose, you could pare down the public benefit list and remove that one or another one if you wanted to.
Counsel, good. So go ahead.
I'll suggest that if that is some kind of an incentive for a potential developer to make their project a go, I'd say, sure, let them have it, because they're the one that's going to have to pay for it.
I guess as somebody that suggested that, I strongly agree with it. I think that, you know, it is a benefit of the city to have living wages. And it's not necessarily saying to pay more here. It's saying that you need to pay a certain amount, your employees a certain amount, if you are going to claim this public benefit. Because then it does benefit the city.
I'll bring it back, please.
Okay, will do. Thank you very much.
Next is, thank you, manager. Gibson Hill Road, Benton County Road and Property Transfer. Stacy Buck Castro, is she still here? Yes, she is. Pages 100 to 115 in your packet.
Good evening. So staff for this item is recommending that council by motion approve the resolution that's included with the staff memo as attachment one. Approving the resolution will result in transferring jurisdiction of Gibson Hill Road and a property that's located on the southwest corner of Gibson Hill Road and North Albany Road from Benton County to the City of Albany. The transfer of Gibson Hill Road and this property, they're the last of near-term transfer items that are defined in the intergovernmental agreement between Benton County and the City of Albany. This agreement was approved by council, I think about 10 years ago. I'm anticipating that council may have a question. Why would we want the county to transfer jurisdiction of roads to the city? We've been in front of council many times discussing that we don't have enough funds to maintain the roads that the city currently does have jurisdiction over. The reason that we do negotiate and discuss these transfers with Benton County is that they do mutually benefit both the county and the city. For the county, they no longer have to have funding to maintain roads. For the city, it's really more of a benefit to clarify ownership to citizens. So often, we get calls to repair potholes, a culvert's plugged, even questions, why is, why is a speed this on a certain street? And it's confusing to people when it's a road that's owned by the county, but it's within the city limits. The other reason it benefits Albany is it does simplify those situations where we have permitting and development proposals that we are reviewing and approving, that are located within the city limits. The IGA does include terms under the, or conditions under the near-term items. So for, excuse me, for Gibson Hill Road, the county did have to use county funds to do street, storm and sidewalk improvements, the entire length of the road from Seneck to North Albany Road. And so in that way, the city is receiving a road that's been improved to city standards.
That's a requirement of all these IGAs to have these roads transferred. That's a, that's a good thing.
Yes, correct. And then I guess I'll just also point out that there is an attachment, attachment three in the memo, and it's a map that identifies the property, Gibson Hill Road. And then it also shows all of the roads that have previously been transferred. Are there any questions?
Counsel Novak?
Thank you. Yeah, I am curious, that .81 acres more or less, as it's described, that property that's being transferred from the county to the city. So the city will own that property. And I'm just wondering, as a city-owned property, if that's something that the city is going to want to build out housing on? Because that road, Gibson Hill, North Albany, as you've heard from myself and many others, has an awful lot of traffic. So I am just going to be honest with you. If there's already some sort of plan that there would be additional housing right there at that roundabout, there are already some single-family dwellings there. But if the plan is that the city wants to make it climate-friendly or something, or just put as many small, anything they can fit in the name of making housing more affordable, then I am, I can't support it. I just wanted to be public about that.
So the intent, what I believe the intent for the property will be to be able to expand the North Albany Pump Station and also to use the property to stage equipment and materials. We have reservoirs and pump stations in North Albany. And so I think that the property will probably be used for those purposes.
Okay, thank you. That makes me feel a whole lot better.
Any other council have anything? Do we have a motion?
I move, we approve the transfer of road jurisdiction.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Thank you, counsel. Next on tonight's agenda is business from the council. I'll start with Counsel Novak and go around this way.
I would rather not be first this evening. I'm not asking to be last. I would just rather not be first. I've been first many times. Thank you.
Counsel Montague?
I have nothing. Thank you.
Counsel Smith?
Two things. I distributed earlier an invitation to everyone, or it's, did it go out already or not? An invitation to the full city council to attend the homeless memorial next Friday, December 20, at 5:30 at Second Chance Shelter. We've been doing this for 16 years. And it is, it's a very nice event. The mayor will be speaking. Chaplain Wes Sedleczek from Samaritan Health will be speaking, as he has done many times. We recognize people who are unhoused or in shelters who have died within the last calendar year throughout Lynn County. The other thing I wanted to mention along those lines is that Community Services Consortium is advertising for volunteers to help with this year's, or the 2025 point in time count of unsheltered and sheltered individuals. That'll be happening as an organized all at one time effort on January 29th. It's a Thursday. But they will be counting throughout the 10 days, well, five days on either side of the 29th. So I have information that I can forward to the council on who to contact and what to do and so on. to do, and so on, if you are interested in doing that kind of volunteering.
Thank you. Counselor Novak.
Thank you. I have three or four things this evening. First of all, I want to make sure that I understood clearly from Monday night's work session, I'm going to need Director Bell Castro's assistance. Mr. Charlie, Mr. Drew Charlie was with us, and he presented us with something that none of us had seen prior to the meeting. It's additional information regarding the request for an easement, and staff recommended that we deny that request at this time, so I wanted to be clear that it was at this time, that there was, I asked that staff review the information from Mr. Charlie that none of us had seen, including staff, and that that inform the decision, or be allowed to inform the decision. And Mr. Mayor, you weren't here, so you didn't even see this. So that was the reason I made the request, that staff and council would consider that prior to flat-out saying no. And then when Director Bell Castro said, "Not at this time," I thought, okay, well then it's going to be considered, and they'll bring it back. But I lack clarity on that, so, thank you.
Our recommendation is not to grant this easement until we understand how and if the property can be developed. So if, once they get to the point of conducting the wetland delineation and developing even a tentative site plan, then we could come back and discuss with the council granting an easement or not at that point. And I'll just hearken you back to the sortie property that we just had to deal with, where the council granted an easement, then the studies were done, and the neighborhood spoke up, and conditions changed, and we had to revoke the easement and go a different route. We're just trying to avoid that situation, so we just need a fuller picture of even what can be done on that property, and then they're welcome to come back and approach the council again. And we didn't see the packet, but Mr. Charlie had been communicating with Stacy all along, so I think pretty much everything he said we understood before we came to the council.
Okay, thank you. That helps. Sure. Thank you. All right, and then a couple other things. I want to know from what Mr. Dennis suggested, because I think it sounds like a darn fine idea, I'm going to need our attorney's assistance, because if I have done this before, it's been a long time. If I would like to propose a change to ordinance 5059, such that it's based on the referendum, let me try that again, to simplify the referendum process, if I would like to put that forward with regard to this ordinance, and that it be based on 10% of the number of votes cast for all mayoral candidates during the most recent election. That's a number that you can very easily quantify. If I would like to put that forward, do I just say I'd like to make a motion that we amend this?
That ordinance has been codified, it's been written into the code, so it's actually 2.88.010 of the municipal code, and there's really, Mr. Dennis's suggestion wouldn't really yield much of a benefit. We can pretty easily find out the total number of voters in the city, and pretty easily determine what 10% of that is.
But that's not how it's written right now, if I understood him correctly.
It is, it is. No, it is. In fact, I can read it for you.
Thank you.
Referendum petitions against any ordinance, franchise, or resolution passed by the city council shall be signed by not less than 10% of the registered voters of the city. The signatures shall be verified by the county recorder in the manner provided by state statute.
I would submit to you, though, that this does actually, this is what Mr. Dennis put forward, is a lot simpler than what you just read. You read 10% of all the registered voters in the city of Albany. What Mr. Dennis is suggesting, and that which I concur, would simplify things, is rather than 10% of all the registered voters, especially when we have things that aren't registered properly, you have people that pass away and they're still on the voter roll, that sort of thing. So this simplifies it, because we're not looking at all the registered voters in the city, we're only looking at those who voted for the mayoral candidates in the most recent election. That's a much smaller, easier number to identify.
That does not simplify it, it just makes the number different.
Well, I think that having a much smaller number, especially as I say, that takes out of the loop any people who've passed away, whose names are still on the voter rolls, and other assorted issues that you find on voter rolls. Someone's registered twice, or similar names, I'm aware of different types of issues. To me, this does indeed simplify it, and the reason that would be a good thing is it actually gives people a voice, some input. We try to be timely with our meetings, and that's the reason the mayor implemented this 30, or three-minute cutoff, and I understand that, but I would just like to see, this gives people recourse, and I have always done my utmost to speak for the people that I represent. I am in favor of this, and I do think it simplifies it, and I'd like to move that we do anything that makes the process of giving the people a voice easier.
Well, I would, I mean, if you've made a motion, then it's up to your colleagues then to make a second. I can address it further and read a little more, I do not think it makes it any better or simpler, it just changes the number.
Comment if I'm allowed?
Please.
Not only does it change the number, but the number changes. Every election cycle, we have a different amount of voters that would be casting votes. Some election cycles, there are increased participation, some have less participation. We would have to figure out when, if there was a referendum in the middle of an election, you would have to clarify what election you're talking about. We would have to wait for the county clerk to count all the votes and certify that we have all the votes, and so I also believe that that just makes it more confusing and less straightforward than what the current ordinance says, so I would be against doing that at this time.
Counselor, any other comments?
Just to make a point of procedural, procedural point here, you couldn't do that with a motion, you'd have to create an ordinance to bring back. So you would be, if you wanted to, you would direct staff to draft that ordinance and bring it back for your vote.
Well, I would really like staff to draft that ordinance and bring it back, because if staff drafted it, then everyone could read it, and it would be, it would be very clear. Maybe my words weren't clear, is my point. Maybe I could have been more clear with what, why I support this and why I think it's a good idea. So if staff would do that, I think that could be beneficial, and I'd appreciate it as my outgoing, whatever, my last final request, that sort of thing.
Then the procedure is to make a motion, and if you have a second, and then vote on it.
So this may not happen, but I move that staff create an ordinance based on what Mr. Dennis put forward, which I have maybe not said very clearly, let me put my readers on, I'll try one more time. I would like to change what's on the books, which requires signatures by at least 10% of the registered voters in the city. I would repose changing this ordinance to require signatures by not less than 10% of the number of votes cast for all mayoral candidates during the most recent election. And I would also put a caveat in there, or an understanding, that if you're in the middle of an election, and people take issue with something, that it would refer to the prior, you know, the most recent election that was completed. So 2022, if someone were to put something forward in 2024, and it was weeks before the election, or a month before the election. I hope I'm being clear enough. So what it does that I didn't say clearly is it would make the number of signatures for a referendum to be a lot less, and that is in the favor of the people who would be making the request. So I, that's my, that's my motion, thanks. I was going to say proposal, it's my motion.
So I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'm stunned, I tell you. Thank you.
Next item?
Yes. The next item is that I would like to say that it has been my honor to do my best to represent the people of Albany these past four years, and my final is a show and tell, which I've never done before. Well, actually, no, I did it when I came back from Canada, and I gave the mayor a pen from the mayor of Charlotte's.
Which I appreciate.
This is my second and final show and tell. Whoops. My sister and I used to have a restaurant here in town for almost 40 years, and we don't have that restaurant anymore, but what we do have, as of recently, is a cookbook. And for anyone who ate at our restaurant, or enjoyed our food, or ever had the privilege of knowing my parents, meeting them, they were beautiful people, I just wanted to say, and again, I've never done this from the dais, nor will I ever again, but we do have a beautiful book, and our city manager, who is a darn fine cook, is going to be a better cook for having purchased this book, and he's going to make his Hungarian mama some really good soups and main courses. It has color photos and stories and restaurant history, and we're really proud of it. So for anybody who enjoys cooking, or eating, or likes to try different cuisine from different countries, this is yours for the low, low price of $24.95. novax-square-site. So there, that's my, that's my show and tell and commercial, and I think if you get it, you will like it. As I say, our city manager honored us by coming to our second signing this past Saturday, December 7th, and we had our first signing on November 16th, to huge crowds, it was much calmer this last time, and I also am thankful to Gina Jaeger, who purchased two of the books. Thank you very much, and to everybody out there who did and will. Thank you. That's it. That's all I've got.
Counselor Newton Azora.
Can't believe it's the last meeting of the year. A great year, and looking forward to the next. And yeah, everyone drive safe, drive sober, and happy holidays.
Counselor Kobsinski?
Yes, I'll second Counselor Novak's thing. You know, I commented about it's been an honor for the last four years. None of us could have foreseen all of the upheavals that we, the city has gone through, that the county, the state, the nation has gone through in the last four years. The pandemic just did a real good, good job on everybody for all sorts of reasons, but I will say that it's been a huge pleasure to work with the city manager, the city staff, a huge shout-out to them for marshaling us through some of the ups and downs, and it's, some of the decisions haven't been easy to make, but we're not paid huge sums that we get to make easy decisions. If all we agreed with each other, you wouldn't need any of us. It's the other points that we can have civil disagreement about, that's what we should have, but as long as we do it, and we come to a decision, then we move forward, don't look back. But it's been a pleasure to work with all of the city staff and the city manager, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Counselor McGee.
School ends on Friday officially. Finals just got wrapped. For those who don't know, I have a nonprofit organization as well, and we just awarded our fifth recipient with the highest award we've been able to give in the last five years, four years, excuse me, and he is a new student at LBCC, majoring in electronics, and due to one of my board members who gave a very generous offer, we were able to give him a huge scholarship, so want to say super happy about that, and have a great holiday season. And it has been an honor to serve with Counselor Novak, as well as Counselor Kobsinski. Onward and upward.
Thank you. So several things, I'll wrap with the thank yous to the counselors that are departing. This afternoon, I attended the regional solutions team for the governor's, regional solutions team. It was a great meeting, we talked about economic development, we talked about daycare was a big part of the topic, because people aren't able to go to work with living wage jobs because of the lack of daycare. So parents and families are making the decision to stay, one of them stay at home, which drives up their overall costs, so their governors, we're making recommendations to the governor to figure out ways to create more daycare in the state. So we're on that team, and we made some really great decisions today, and hoping that it gets approved by the legislature. Next, I attended the leadership summit in Portland on Monday, so I want to thank Counselor Smith for managing the meeting and getting things going. I had a meeting chat with the governor, mayor, president of OSU, and several other elected officials and executives. There's a lot of things coming down the pipe that are good for economic development, and the governor mentioned Albany specifically about certain things, and so I was pretty excited about that. And I have a handout that I'll send to the city clerk to pass out to everyone, but it was a great day up in Portland, cold but a great day. I want everyone here that has someone in their family on Medicare to understand that there's scammers right now on the phone calling them, right? And they ask, "Who is your agent?", and they tell the person that name, and several of my clients have been called, and they divulge who their agent was, "Oh, we know Alex", right? "He said I could call you." So please tell them not to take calls from people asking for your agent's information, or your Medicare number, or your member ID number, because several hundred people that I am their agent of have been called in the last week, so just please warn them. Have them call their agent to verify. I want to express, I attended the grand groundbreaking for Valor Place, non-vent and housing authorities building and development for low-income veterans and people with mental health issues, and so it was nice to see Sharon Kanopa there, Commissioner Springer, Counselor Smith was there. It's a great project, I'd love to see you guys take a look at that on the website. And then sending out Christmas cards by the thousands, it seems like, and I did deliver Christmas cards here on the dais, and it was an honor to write those. Little hurry, so they might be a little scribbly, but it works. And then I want to thank Counselor Novak, and Counselor Kobsinski, my next-door neighbor, and I did my first time ever coming to Albany. Somebody in Eugene said, "HP's building a factory, once you stop there and put a resume, and they'll upload your resume." He says, "But before you do that, stop at Novak's Restaurant and have lunch."
And you did.
And I did. I met mom and pop that day, but the cool thing was, there was a gentleman that just got a job offer from HP, having lunch, celebrating with his family. And so fond memories of my first day in Albany, so I will buy, I'm going to buy one of the books.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
And thanks for eating at the restaurant.
And with that, I will then turn it over to our city manager, and I wish all of you, staff, citizens, have a wonderful holiday season. It's one of my favorite times of year, and I eat a lot of food, talk too much, drink too much, but it's a wonderful time of year for me, and I hope all of you have a healthy and joyous Christmas and Happy New Year. Now, city manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And as we're all waxing sentimental about the end of the year and wishing everybody happy holidays, I want to remind you, your work isn't quite yet done. We have an executive session to attend after, after we do this next part. But this next part, I wanted to start by paraphrasing Thomas Jefferson, and Thomas Jefferson said that government is strongest when every citizen feels himself apart. We're always working towards this lofty goal. Counselors Kobsinski and Novak did just that by taking the challenge that many, many people aren't willing to take, and that's running for and serving their community elected office. So we'd like to recognize them tonight, and Counselor Novak, if I could get you to come down here? There, if you would join us?
Pictures and everything.
Pictures and everything, yes. Oh, hang on, we have not done, I'm going to, let me just start this off. I'll tell you that this plaque is presented to you in recognition of four years of dedicated service to the city. You've been a passionate voice for Albany, your impact on the council was immediate, and you often brought a unique perspective to discussions that challenged conventional thinking. Your advocacy for small businesses was steadfast, and you ardently supported our longstanding goals of transparency and economic development. That your commitment to our community motivated you is unquestionable. Your passion, your commitment, and your care for people will long be remembered. I'm grateful for the time and significant effort you dedicated to our council, and I And I know you won't miss having to cross the bridge in the heart of Albany's rush hour. It's been, for me, it's been an honor to work with you. And personally, I'm going to ask the mayor to present this to you. Personally, and you'll have to, you're gonna have to give it back to us because we're gonna have to fix it. Personally, I want to tell you that I've enjoyed getting to know you and talking about the common Hungarian heritage we share over lunch as well as the issues facing our city. So in recognition of your four years of service as a counselor and for your part in ensuring that we can continue providing quality public services for a better Albany, please accept this shadow box on behalf of the council and the staff. Congratulations on completing your term of office. And thank you for your service.
Thank you very much.
Hopefully so we can fix that.
Thank you. I think I did.
Counselor Kobsinski?
Yes, there.
Mayor, you're not going anywhere. Counselor Kobsinski thought he would escape since he's already done this once. So Counselor Kobsinski? Yeah, it's in here.
Oh, it is? Okay, I'll leave him alone.
You're gonna have to explain it.
I'm still your thunder. It's all right.
I've, I've known you for eight years now and I've just not figured out how to spell your last name correctly. I finally perfected it. DOD does not stand for Department of Defense, which is what I read. But in typical self-deprecating way, you want to explain? I mean, I think you explained it when you, way back, four years ago.
Right, it's not dinosaur, it's not Department of Defense. It's dinosaur on dais. After the last election, by 10, 10 years, I was the oldest person on the dais. So it's like a pleasure now.
It's all good. I get to take it home with me tonight. Yes. So your, your promise to serve and then make way for someone else to serve has been a noble one. And you leave a legacy of collaboration, service, and dedication. You've been a true representative of the people, always listening and always striving to improve. You've completed eight years of dedicated service to our city. And you've made a lasting impact with your steadfast support of our downtown revitalization. Your contributions have shaped the future of this city in ways that will continue to benefit generations to come. Thank you for your vision, your perseverance, and for always striving to make this city a place where everyone can thrive. Your commitment to making our community better will not be forgotten. We're grateful for the hard work, passion, and leadership that you brought. And on a personal note, it's been a privilege working with you and meeting you for breakfast to talk about city issues. Your curiosity and your insightful questions and your passion for serving others are inspirational. I know you'll remain involved with our community since you play such a key role with the carousel, especially at Christmas times. I guess you have a, an end with a certain person. But I hope you'll enjoy the coming respite from public service. And you've earned it. So because you've already received the key to the city, the shadow box, on your first retirement from city council, we have this plaque for you. Here if you present. Thank you again for the countless hours you've dedicated to making our city a better place. And congratulations on completing the term of office. And thank you for your service.
So, so I wonder if you guys know this, but Ray is my next door neighbor. So having someone to serve with that I can walk across my driveway and just have a conversation, whether, how things are going, ideas on things. And, and I love him and his wife because they're my family. I don't know if you know this, my brother and father, and all my brothers and sisters are deceased. And so Ray has been family to me, like an uncle or a grandfather or a father, since I live next door to him. And I do appreciate you and your wife. And thank you so much for being you and, and tricking me into running for city council. So thank you very much. Thank you, Ray.
You have more time?
You have anything else from?
No, Mr. Mayor, we have an executive session. And then we resume again in January for the next meeting.
So when do you get your lawyer and your attorney online?
The city council now meet an executive session to discuss current litigation or litigation likely to be filed in accordance with ORS 192.660 subsection 2, subsection H. Representatives of the news media and designated staff and other persons shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other parties, participants must exit. Online, audience members will be moved into a waiting room. When the council returns to open session, staff will re-meet those remaining in the waiting room or to rejoin the meeting. In-person audience members must leave the council chambers and wait in the hallway. When the council returns to open session, staff will open the doors and you can rejoin the meeting. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberations during the executive session except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decisions were made in the executive session. I now recess the executive session at 8:10 PM.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to reassure you that this stranger in the top-
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to reassure you that this stranger in the top.
Mr. Mayor, just to make a point, uh Millersburg councilors were invited to come tonight. Um they declined, they have, they do have a couple of new councilors. But they did ask that we somehow update them in January with respect to C H two M L.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we have nothing to do coming out of session, so with that. Our next meeting will be Monday, January sixth twenty twenty five at four P M for work session.